Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the June 27th, no, I'm sorry, July 24th, meeting of the Winter Town Council. This is a work session. You see, we have all kinds of work on the province tonight. The first on the agenda is what New England's. Okay, next thing off the agenda, Jim won't be here. Hopefully, he made it to Zoom. He's not feeling well. And Linda won't be here, she's out of state on vacation. But as regards Linda, was planning on making an announcement tonight, so we'll do it anyway. She can catch it later on Facebook on YouTube. Yeah, so Linda's recently been appointed interim Maine State Chamber President. So we'll give her a little. Okay, next on the agenda is item. We already changed this, we're working on some new rules of the Town Council. It'll come up later on the agenda. But first, next on the agenda is public comment period. So if anyone has any public comments to make, not necessarily involving the agenda items, involving anything you wish, please come to the up front and tell us which is in. Nobody.
You want to explain why we're at this point?
Yeah, I can do that. The idea is that we have an idea that you presumably reviewed the agenda. And you have an idea of where we're headed here. And also, you may have items you want to put on next month's agenda or some future agenda, or just items to start thinking about, putting on agenda and working on. Okay, just about anything is open to be spoken about. It's not a question and answer, it's a called public comment period. So if there's no one, I'll move on.
It's also seat on to wait here all day to get your word for.
Yeah, I think that we're gonna move the meeting, the public comment period at the end forward. Okay, so some people might just show up and just have one or two things to say and then have business to go to do it all. All right, there being no comment. The next thing on the agenda is consideration of the scope of services and fixed fee agreement for legal services with Bernstein Sure. Who wants to start out now?
Yeah, why don't you let me give you just a little bit of background. So, so last year, the town spent $54,000 in legal fees. And of that amount, 44,000 meant to our primary law firm, Bernstein Sure. That was, that was about $4,000. Well, the total amount spent was about $14,000 over what was budgeted. What we spent with Bernstein Sure was $4,000 was budgeted, which was $40,000. And so, one of the things that I have done for working with Mr. Socher is negotiating a contract for a fixed fee. And I think the benefits of that are two-fold. One, it allows us to budget with certainty what our legal costs will be. And then the second thing is, whenever I am talking with Phil, I'm always very mindful that his rate is $290 an hour. And so I always have one eye on the clock. Sometimes, that doesn't make for very deliberative thinking as we're talking through some things. And not that he's ever rushed me. But anyway, so I think this gives us a little bit of freedom to have the depth of conversations that we sometimes need to have with our council without worrying about the meter run. This contract would cover most of what is considered in-house services for the firm. And everything that we spent with Bernstein Sure last year would qualify under this fixed fee contract. The things that don't qualify are things like appeals of municipal decisions and some sort of appellate body, tax increment financing, bond insurances, and labor negotiations. So we may have some of those things this year. But we have budgeted for $40,000. And this ensures that our general legal expenses with Bernstein Sure would not exceed $35,000. And so Mr. Socher is here with us on Zoom, and I'm sure he'd be happy to answer any questions, as would I.
I've one more question, so I'll let you.
I do. One question I had, Anthony, does that, you mentioned the $10,000 that was spent with other attorneys. Are we still likely to need that $10,000 with other attorneys?
So, so about $7,500 of that was for the town manager's search. Hopefully, you won't have to spend that this year. And then, and then the other, I was not quite certain what the expense was for. It was with, it was with another law firm. And the invoice referenced some school bond financing. There were some improvements made to the school facilities. And, and so I don't know if we were reaching out to them because we had questions about what was being done, what they were advising us on the proper way to go about this. I'm assuming this was the school district's law firm that they use. So, so I wouldn't think either of those expenses are things we're gonna have to worry about this coming year for all.
Okay.
Good, right? I'm good, yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, a member of the public, I think, coming up and say something.
Is there, who'll use the microphone?
Jim, thank you. What are you saying, listening to the bodies? I'm wondering if this contract covers Phil coming to man out to the city with the council and executive session. And I'm wondering if that can happen sooner than later to discuss what I believe was some misinformation that might have been given to Phil as well as to some of the council members this past year or year and a half. And that might help move us along even further if Phil can come down and talk to some of the council members and go over some of those mooring issues that he might have run into this information on. That's all I have, but other than that, hopefully.
And just to answer, answer the question. Yeah, this contract would, at times involve Phil coming and actually sitting with us, depending on, and we wouldn't charge, you know, extra for his time, depending upon what the nature of the conversation is. You know, if it's dealing with some sort of litigation, either we're responding to some litigation or we're considering filing some litigation ourselves. That's not the sort of thing that would be covered under this contract.
That's correct.
Any other questions?
Am I, am I correct in assuming that any, anything, any attorneys that we're gonna need to turn to in the next year for stuff that we have known coming down the pipeline, this is gonna cover?
Yes, and so while Phil is our primary, the primary attorney that we deal with, for instance, when it comes to employment matters, we'll probably be dealing with another attorney at Bernstein Sure. And so, so yes, this would cover any sort of legal help from any of the staff that we needed.
But this does cover all the attorneys at first?
Yes.
That's correct. Yeah.
I move to approve the agreement with Bernstein Sure as presented in manual post $35,000 setting.
Okay. Who's in favor? Okay, so, who's Jim? Okay, all present, question, are in favor.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you, take care.
Good afternoon.
You too.
Okay, item 133, consideration of Google user across point for assessment to Centennial. Thanks for that on, by the way. Labor Day picnic and fireworks. I think for Zilla, Jacob's want to make his work presentation on that matter.
Yeah, one of my goals was everybody would be able to say it. I'm sorry, first of all, I didn't get you a handout. I, we don't have a budget that's in any form to share really at this point. We have a little, we have some funds for the fireworks, but let me jump ahead. So we're eager to wrap up the summer with a big community party. The focus is winter, our town, its people, and the part of unceded Wabanaki land which on which we reside, work, learn, and play. So starting at 4:00 PM on Saturday, the 2nd of September, we will have display of town vehicles. We already have spoken to everybody but Matt, so. And the police department said that you will probably come up with one too, right? So that people can see the assets we have on our payroll or on our payroll that, that we are paying for and, and meet some of the folks who are caring for us. We will also have games and food. There are some open questions, and we still could use another volunteer to on the team. So anybody who was interested in helping out, I would be interested in talking with you. We are gonna have door prizes. We have four cornhole sets, so we hope to have some fun things to do. Or until six, between six and seven, we've got to clear out of North Cross Point because that's it up the fireworks. And we will have music at the beach. And I'm hoping to get a band that will permit us to sing along, dance along, whatever, until the fireworks show actually begins. And I'm not sure when that will be. We checked this afternoon, sunset is at 7:15, so not probably before 7:45. But they need at least, I think, two hours. So I think it's more like eight o'clock by the time we have our fireworks. But that should be an opportunity for us to hang together just for fun and meet some of the local people who are involved with clubs and food. And I haven't gone out and asked whether some of our gift shops will display things, but we're certainly hoping to get them on board between now and then. So just a good time to meet people where we are, where we live, and in the full beauty of our town. And we're, tonight, we're asking for permission to hold that at that North Cross Point. I'm hoping that that means that if, that our insurance will cover the event as a town function. And that's basically what it's for. I haven't yet discussed it. Chief Garland about road closures, but there will be some around the time of the fireworks.
Okay, does anyone else have no questions, Professor? Okay.
Told you already.
What?
So, so, Tom? She does, I have a question. So I just want to clarify that your original plan is to have this on September 2nd. So I'm assuming your rain date will be September 3rd? Yeah. Okay, just want to make sure that people know that because you've put Labor Day weekend, Labor Day picnic, but you didn't put a date.
Oh, I should, I, I forgot to do that.
You want to make sure, because the date that.
It is September 2nd.
And I also want to say, I appreciate the fact that you made, made a point of saying that they're on unceded Wabanaki land, this is never ceded, thank you, thank you.
Okay, does anyone in the audience have a question for Professor? All right, Jim?
Yeah, I just wanted to the fireworks, fireworks company that's doing it, okay, there are, he has, he has eight orders he has to follow. I just want to make sure that your timeline and his timeline don't converge with each other because we're down the fort, we get to have everybody out there by five, ready to set up the fireworks display. So maybe reach out to him and see what his timeline is so we can.
I will confirm that, yeah. Definitely, and he's the one who gets the permit from the state, yeah. Yeah, I'll confirm all that with him, I can do that if you guys wish, if you would like.
Okay, there are no other questions, thank you very much. Questions? There are. Okay, Bruce?
Do you have an estimated cost?
The cost of the fireworks is gonna be 3,800, which we have, it's 35 plus in the bank right now. We do plan to do a little bit of soliciting to, to close that gap. As far as other expenses, we may need to pay the band, I haven't talked to them, but there's other appliances, volunteer, volunteer groups, et cetera, that are working on it. Thank you.
Anyone else? No one else to turn, entertain a motion?
I want to make the motion to approve the use of North Cross Point for Sestres Centennial Labor Day Picnic and Fireworks on September 2nd with the rain date of September 3rd.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, and further discussion?
I just want to clarify, is that for road closure, would we include that in this? Or is that?
For certain closures?
Chief?
Would that in this? That's standing.
What we're looking at doing is the possibility of closing from Summer Street down to Greenwood, Nicklebacher, like we do during the fireworks, to keep people safe during that event.
Yeah.
Do you think that needs to be part of the motion to include street closures?
I think that's required.
Okay. Let me, let me rescind my original motion. I meant that to say, move to approve the use of North Cross Point for Sestres Centennial, September 2nd with the rain date of September 3rd for Labor Day Picnic and Fireworks with the closure of the street from Summer Street to Nicklebacher Lane for pedestrian uses.
I second that.
Okay, any further discussion? I will make a comment if no one else has anything to say. I was out in the boat, the 1st of July fireworks, and we need law enforcement out there. It's downright dangerous. People out there without running lights, people running around, flat out full speed. You know, a couple people took a dive in, saw two blows of fireworks. You know, maybe we can talk a warning and come down for the guy or something. You know, they're really and speak with the authorities, maybe teach a point, so you can be that in a bad situation. So that's all I have to say. So if you want to take a word at this point? Okay, all in favor?
Bruce, are you in favor?
No, I'm opposed. Okay, the record show, Kim in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
She's five to one.
Yeah, five, five in favor and Bruce is opposed.
Can I just mention one thing, Andy?
Uh, please make a brief.
Very brief, I just want to say, it's not just town vehicles will be there because Roy Lamanis has said he will bring a few classic cars, so it's still getting to.
Thank you.
James, James will hold. Our meetings are at four o'clock on Mondays for anybody can meet us.
Thank you very, thank you very much. And Professor, thank you very much for all your efforts. I know this has been an all kinds of a for you. All right. All right, item 134, consideration of easement request on Duchess Row. Who wants to start on that one? Are we just gonna go?
Well, Bill, we have, they want to speak to others again.
Yeah, so, so maybe Mr. Moody would be the proper person to introduce this.
Sounds like a plan. So the council and Mr. Towne, I'm Stan Moody. Living in a little town four miles up the road called Manchester. No worries, but Barbara, she's a member of the Angol Sierra Music Plan on investment of blade. Basically, I was the developer of the Apple Farm processing belt back in the late 80s. And split with my partner, I think right around 89. And asked for a piece of land and a small fund to, so he can move on by himself. The, the development was, was completed, approved, and then the market, oh, our vision number, 1990, 91, in that, in that period. This piece of land is 3.1 acres and is adjacent to the, what was at that time, a common area for stormwater. It's listed on your, in your website as located on Duchess Row, which no longer exists. And I've been a little asleep with the switch here for some time because of not realizing that all this was going on. When it was sold to the town for the purpose of building the middle school there. Apparently, when they put the ball field in, they terminated Duchess Row and the public water supply. To my knowledge, did not notify the Department of that effect. So we're in a situation now where we have a contract on that land. Somebody wants to build a house up there. And I think the, we need to bring the water across to the land. And that is pretty much the essence. We've had, we've got an attorney go through this and the water industry has been on board with it. And as far as I know, there are no more issues that have arisen in the process.
Is that that strip that's right beside the big gray house that was for sale for a long time, so that's going?
Oh, you mean, you mean the, what used to be the grandy win?
Yes.
Yes, it's in backup.
Okay.
Yes, and I, in the process, I owned that and also purchased a piece of the land on 202 that goes up into that piece. We have sewer as a result of the emergency access road that goes down on the east side.
Just out of curiosity, are there any neighbors that are affected by it?
No, no, the, there's one, the last house on the farm. Of course, everything, after that, once the, my, my former partner went back up to that project, there were about 30 lots that never, never were developed. The last one was a lot number 26, which is the house next to, on the west side. Any other questions?
Is the land that this easement is going across, is that developed land or undeveloped land?
It's undeveloped land and it is, it probably, I kind of, I should have sent you a copy of that. It's a, it's a cross, what, what was the common stormwater runoff area of 31,000 square feet for the development, and it has remained there. And it's not, not developable.
Does that lot have a driveway access to Duchess Row?
It has the emergency access road that goes up on the west side of it. And they are applying to the DOT to have it available as a driveway.
So this, on the map, on the map here, is it this drainage easement, is that what you look for?
The easement is right in here in the common area, so right in here, and it'll be, it'll be coming across here.
Okay.
Side of the drive.
What's that?
Looks like it's opposite side of the drive.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I make the motion to approve easement request to bestie and Moody on Duchess Row, will offer one. Paul's second.
And all in favor? Yes, all in favor, I will call you.
Jim's got a thumbs up.
It's okay.
Okay, Mr. Moody, you're outside, thank you very much. Okay, item 135, discussing the consideration of mooring's committee appointments. I think that this one is for the computer. Go over here.
Sure. We received 13 applications to the town manager in response to the town's call for applicants to form an ad hoc committee on moorings. The opportunity was publicized via the town's website, email alerts, Facebook. So we got a ton of them, we reviewed them, and our final committee selections are, I don't know if they're here or not, but Barbara Rosasch, Wayne Matthew Colpitts, Dwight Doherty, Michael Ketchum, Lynn Reed, Matt Steele, and Jim King. To form the ad hoc committee on moorings.
I think we've found that this reflected a good array of collection of people to represent property owners, waterfront owners, mooring owners, right-of-way owners, personnel with inclusion and accessibility perspectives, town residents that were more interested in just the process. And just to note that with the interest that we have from the committees, it doesn't exclude anyone from taking part in showing up to those committee meetings or submitting their input to those committee members. So we do appreciate all of the applications that we did receive, and we do want to thank them for submitting those and hope that everybody still submits that feedback, so thank you.
All the meetings are open to the public, so in light of full transparency. So I'd like to remind everybody that either apply or has an interest in it to attend these meetings. They'll be announced and publicized via the same means, Facebook, all that stuff, the town website. And if there's any questions?
Comments, any concerns? You read the names pretty quickly, so I only got Barbara, Matthew, Matt, Mike, Dave.
Good reading, back.
Okay.
And in addition to that, you're a lot better at multiple sticks than I am, so if you want to read the names.
No, no, I got. No, I understood what you said, actually, it was spelled and everything, so.
And we do have four of the potential appointees here in the audience.
If they could stand up and be recognized, I'd appreciate it. My. It's down. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I'm Jim, again.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
All right, do board members have any questions concerning the applicants or methods that they were chosen?
Okay. I think they did a pretty good job. I think so, yeah. I make a motion to accept all the.
I need to ask the audience, is there anyone in the gallery that has any objection to the members choosing them? Okay, Aaron or not, okay, go for it.
I'll make a motion to accept the board members that were chosen by the appointments committee for the ad hoc mooring committee.
And then you need to say that.
I need to say their names.
Yeah, you should.
All right. Make them, let me start over. Make a motion to accept the. Make a motion to accept the following, Barbara Brochus. Matthew Culpits, Dwight Goudy, Michael Ketchum, Lynn Reed. Matt Steele and Jim King, uh, as members of the ad hoc mooring committee. Uh, that were selected by the, our appointments committee.
Other, is there a second? I can't do it, folks.
Second?
All right, all that are in favor?
What, what?
Okay, let the record show. Um, that they're all in favor.
What about Jim?
What about you? Okay, five in favor? All right, and, um, all that are opposed? Okay, want to post? Okay, uh, no extensions, but we do have a whole number of presented to me. Okay. All right, now we're gonna move on to. The charge of the mooring committee, what exactly it is that we expect and. Or hope that they will be able to do. Okay, now, that it just freed this out of. That this charge was drafted prior to knowing the makeup of the committee. Membership, so it may have been amended at the meeting to reflect the council's appointments, the charge and service groups. Uh, marching orders that will be shared with the appointees and discussed in the group's first meeting. As a reminder, we plan to post all committee meetings, so the public may attend and participate, including Zuber. Okay, and I will serve as the group's facilitator, I assume that's Anthony. Okay. All right, and that's a little bit redone, and it was already said that it needed to be right into the record. Okay, um, do we want to discuss the charge or? Just keep going?
Yes, so this hasn't changed at all since, uh, since you saw last, other than this. The, I guess the opening sentence would say the ad hoc mooring committee will be comprised of. Seven citizens who apply to serve on the committee were recommended by the. Town council's appointments committee and are informed by the council, so. Uh. That was my guessing as to what would happen here tonight, and is what happened, so otherwise, the, the verbiage of this has not changed since you, since you've seen it last.
Well, can you read the charge?
Sure.
Just for everybody's.
So the charge of the committee is, the committee is charged with reviewing the repealed mooring ordinance and reporting it back to the town council. With recommendations within a year. In doing so, it may seem to answer three questions, one, does Winthrop need a mooring? Two, if so, what should the ordinance seek to accomplish? And three, what from the repealed ordinance should be retained and what amendment should be ignored? And again, so, so we're looking to, uh, deliver a report of the findings. To the town manager no later than, uh, August thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. And then at a subsequent town, uh, town council meeting. The, uh, the committee will present its findings for the council's consideration. And then the council will consider either adopting the committee's recommendations as presented, or calling for a special referendum. Election for voters to consider the recommendations, that is, the council does not intend to. Amend the recommendations from the, uh, ad hoc mooring committee in a short way.
So I'm just curious as to why that isn't included in this, in this motion? Why have that wordage was included?
Well, typically, a motion is just meant to be very short and concise.
Right. But it says move to approve the charge, but you weren't given the charge, you just read it to us.
No, the charge was part of the, the background packet that was sent back on Thursday.
I didn't, I didn't see it, but everybody goes.
It's, it's on the back, it's on the backside of the memo. Now, I'm just trying to.
On the backside, same page.
Oh, look at that, it's the everything.
I see what you're saying, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
It is still wasteful.
And you tell me you missed all the backpages, Andy?
No, I, 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 I've looked at the front page of that one and moved to.
I appreciate paper saving.
All right, so, uh, the chair will entertain a motion on this matter.
I'll make a motion, I move to approve the updated, uh, or, uh, I move to approve the. Change of ad hoc mooring committee as presented.
Is there a second? Charge.
I second.
Okay, um, there's a second. All right, is there any discussion?
I just have one, more of a comment, actually, for all the applicants that we did receive, are we, is there? A way of notifying those that did not get on the committee and those that did get on the committee that may have either been selected or, um, can't just sit there?
Yeah, so I previously did tell the ones who were being nominated that, that their appointment would be considered here tonight. Now that you've made your decision, I'll, I'll contact the rest.
Great, thank you.
And I, I have a question. Um, it may not be workable, but. Is it, I would be one of those folks who wants to get this done as soon as possible, but on the other hand. Um. Uh, the original goal was to include this in, in an election cycle rather than that. Is that possible, is that way too long?
Well, well, I think if, if you have a referendum, if you send this to a referendum, I think the plan would be to do that next November, your turnout's probably gonna be. It'll be a presidential.
Yeah, okay.
That'll be good to me. It'll also give the committee more time to. You know, come together and make recommendations. I didn't want to rush through it, and I thought this November would have been too fast.
Right, no, I, no, I was thinking August twenty-fourth and then a referendum. Where I, I was thinking incorrectly, you said if it's all done by August before, there's plenty of time to get it all done in November.
And there's a lot of work that has to be done.
Well, and, and so the timing is pur- purposeful, so.
Yeah.
The report to me by August twenty-fourth, we'll present it to the council in September. Hopefully you'll make a decision then, and that gives us enough time to put it on the November ballot, because that'll be something that we'll have to print out in advance. To, to run it via the automated counters.
Okay, um, are there any further questions from the audience? Or comments? Okay, uh, any further questions or comments on the board? Okay, or is there no questions or comments from either? Um, and so, chair, we want to entertain a motion, item one thirty-five.
We, we have a motion second.
Okay, yeah, we have a vote. You know what I'd do without you guys, to keep you straight. I just admitted that on YouTube. All in favor? The record show.
Jim's, Jim's good.
Five in favor? Uh, all against? Let the record show one against. Let the record show one absence. Okay, I, what have you told? Okay, item one thirty-six, discussion and consideration, and we just did that. I jumped in, uh, mooring created charge. Item one thirty-seven, consideration of updated council rules. Okay, we want to start that one.
Well. I'd like to table this until the regular meeting that we have the first Monday of the month. So that all counselors can be present. And vote in person. Uh, or some, you know, the Zoom.
And also so that they're all aware.
And they're all aware, absolutely, thank you.
Is there, um, that motion?
I'll make a motion, I'll be tabled until our next meeting of, uh, town council.
Well, so.
Okay, um. If I go above. And we discuss it, you think, a little bit, or just table it?
I think they just table it and move on.
Okay.
Discuss it at the formal meeting.
All right, then, the poll, oh. Uh, all in favor? Let the record show, let the record show.
All in favor.
All in favor? No.
Jamie's got the self as a one ass. Jamie's thumbs up.
Okay. Okay, item one thirty-eight, consideration of dispersment warrants. You have one?
I do. Please. Am I supposed to do something with these? The hammer. I just, so, so just so you guys know, uh. And I learned the, the finance committee members, but anyone who wants to see the dispersment warrant prior to the meeting, they're just welcome to come by my office. Take as much time with it as you want.
I think Linda's supposed to sign it too, but she's not.
So I do have a, a procedural question in that regard, so, um. I didn't know that two of the members weren't going to be here, but. Just so I know. Does it need all three finance committee members' signatures, or, or if we had two, are we good?
I believe it's two.
Okay.
I'm also looking at it. Excited to move on to all.
Uh, Jim.
I'll just say, I don't. Well, they may, maybe they can stop by your office.
I'll offer that.
I move to approve the dispersment warrants as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, um. All that are in favor? Like, the record show, uh, Jim's in favor?
Yep.
Uh, all are in favor, except the absent member. Okay. One thirty-nine, consideration of a joint agreement with the town of Monmouth with police chief services.
This is just a point of order first, though, do we have to keep mentioning the absent member when we have a forum?
Yeah, you need to note that there's an absent number, you need to know.
We note that when we take attendance, so when we take the vote, we should just do. Yay and nay.
I don't know, it's, it's, I personally think it's a personal goal, I guess.
I know that personally, but I don't think it's necessary. You know, or.
Uh, I don't see that, I mean. Okay, whoa. Uh, I guess it's up to, uh, Paul, he's gonna make a short presentation of that.
No, I, I'll speak to it, but, uh, but you want to come to the podiums just in case I have, uh, a question, so.
Yeah, right.
So the agreement before you, uh, was crafted by myself and the town manager in Monmouth, uh, Justin Borner. And, and Chief Berlin offered input throughout the process. So just to, just a few of the, the high points of the, uh, of the agreement. Is Chief Berlin is a Monmouth employee and continue to be a Monmouth employee. We will pay sixty percent of the cost of his salary and his benefits. And so how did we come up with sixty percent? Well, I asked Chief Berlin. How much of your time do you anticipate spending in Winthrop versus Monmouth? And he's, he, he estimated, and, you know, it remains missing, but he estimated sixty percent of his time would be spent here. Perhaps coincidentally, we have six thousand people, Monmouth has four thousand people, so I think that math works out pretty well, even on a per capita basis. Uh, we will provide, uh, a police cruiser, and then Monmouth will pay for all the fuel and maintenance of, of that vehicle. The contract's term is for three years. And, uh. When we did our recent onboarding with the councilman, Wayne, uh, he was enthusiastic about this sort of collaboration. And, and I agree with him, but I said the key component of this work is having the right person in the job. And there is zero doubt in my mind that Chief Berlin is the right person for this job. Not only is he a seasoned law enforcement professional, he knows both communities intimately. And he has struck me as being a consummate professional in the time that I've known him, so. I've enjoyed working with him, I look forward to working with him more, and I think this is a win-win situation for both communities. Chief, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, I appreciate that. All right, just entertaining, any questions from, if anybody would have. I'll be nice. I'll be nice. Thank you. Um, this has been, this has been an ongoing. Thought process for years, and it just never came to fruition for one reason or another. Uh. When Ryan decided to leave earlier in the year, he approached me and asked me if I'd be willing to act as interim. Chief for Winthrop. Uh, while, uh. Kind of decided what they were gonna do moving, moving forward on that position. Uh, then the talk started about this sharing of the position, and, uh, there was a lot of concern from, uh. Our town manager in Winthrop and Monmouth as to, uh. Whether it would be too much for one person to handle, and we're talking about. Twenty, twenty-five employees, when I was with the county, I had sixty-one employees. When I worked with thirty-two communities, thirty-two councils. So, working with two councils is. And it's good. If I ever feel a point where I'm overwhelmed. My town manager just will be the first, well, I'm not afraid to say, I can't handle it. You know, but as, as it's going right now, uh, I feel very confident that it can be done and. Share the resource and save a little money in the process.
I, I can say under your, your. Your leadership, I've already seen an increase in, uh. Uh, what's the word I want to use, like visibility of the offices in the town. Because I've seen much more officers out and about in different areas.
And, and, yeah, and I, I can't stand here and take full credit for that, because Ryan, one of the things, uh, Chief Frost did. Before he left is, uh, we got cruisers all outfitted with, with mirrors. Uh, the officers are able to stay out of the road more because they're not having to come into the office to do, to do their reports, so they actually, it actually, uh. Is a twofold issue, it keeps them out on the road and they get their reports done. So it's a win-win.
And, and, uh. I don't, I don't want to pat, keep feeling too hard on the back here, but, but, uh, he has also incorporated the two departments training together. And I think there's all sorts of benefits that come from that sort of collaboration and, uh, idea sharing, and so. You know, it has struck me in New England, I, because the towns, every town but several other towns, I thought there'd be a lot more collaboration between communities, and what I. Uh, learned was that, uh, our towns are very provincial, and that, uh, they don't necessarily, uh, want to help their neighbors. I think this is, uh, a great opportunity to sort of use it as a springboard for other sorts of partnerships.
Are we the first to tell?
No, there are other, actually two others who stayed that do this, one is Barbara, right?
Well, I'm not really in Camden, Rockport.
Yeah.
Nice. I know Camden and Rockport counts as one town.
I move to, uh, approve the agreement, uh, with the town of Monmouth for police chief services.
Paul second.
All in favor? The record show, all in favor, I assume James in favor?
Yes.
Can I end this off with one member as?
Thank you, Paul.
I'd also like to thank, uh, Chief Berlin for an excellent presentation and a pile of data that. I'll be able to look at later on, thank you very much, Chief.
If you have any questions on that.
Always, I know that, thank you.
Okay, good to go on that one.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief, and, you know, I know your presentation is up next, but I kind of threw the two of you together.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Okay.
Did he see you doing one thing, Chris?
All right, I, um. Next, it's, it's other business, and I guess I have a question to add right off. I, I came under a lot of pressure to do a roll call vote, and it seems to me that if we have an absent member, that should be noted when we vote. And if all of you don't think that's necessary, who's to give that step? Easy, easy.
Roll. My understanding is a roll call vote applies to people that are present.
Yeah, I, I serve at your pleasure, as they say. It just seems to me that someone that tuned in at the earlier meeting, people don't necessarily know that they're having everyone make that vote. Uh, business.
No, we actually have a presentation by the police chief. So, so remember, let me just do a little setup here, remember that, uh, I had mentioned earlier. That at these workshop meetings, I want to have one department each month to come and sort of. Present who they are, what they do, how they do, why they do, and so, uh. This will be a, a refresher, a very fresh, refresher course for Roy, because he, he'll have heard all these presentations just last week. But I thought it was a good opportunity to do this because. But I thought it was a good opportunity to do this because this was done during budget hearings. My own personal opinion is during budget hearings, you ought to be talking about the budget as opposed to operations. They can you can talk about how the budget impacts operations. But uh but I thought the budget hearing was more of a light on uh financial matters and really having the operational matters. I think it's important that you folks know and understand what's going on within each of the departments. But uh so that's why I wanted to use these forms in order to do that and use the budget hearings to to really focus some on the budget. So the chief has prepared a PowerPoint uh presentation, which is up there, but and and Chief, oh.
Before we get going, my apologies, I assumed that uh one thirty-nine was by one thirty-eight. And uh that was a mistake, so go for it. Thank you.
Chief, I just wanna ask you, Chief, do you want the mic stand so you have both hands free?
Uh the mic, we have a new microphone, that's why it sounds so good, and the mic, mic doesn't fit in the mic stand, so.
I'm glad the new mic's here, though.
Yeah, we are gonna get a new mic stand.
Um Roy, I did change the slides up, so it'll be a test, but yeah. All right, I'm on it.
Love it.
All right, so. As you know, my name's Paul Ferland, chief of police for Monmouth, and now one third of the blessings, thank you very much. Uh we'll go to the next slide and just do a quick. With the police department provides community law enforcement services down on one third of the works cooperatively cooperatively with area public safety agencies. Police department serves as regional regional emergency communications dispatch center, police fire handling service, seven partner communities. Staff includes ten law enforcement officers, dispatch center, staff with five dispatcher, full-time dispatchers and four part-time dispatchers. All providing twenty-four seven services to our community. Other staff include administrative assistant and part-time custodian. One of the Monmouth now shared the chief of police, this has contributed to reducing costs in the town, the both communities. Various police staff have received training to be specific instructors in self-defense and firearm safety. Uh staff involved continued the diversity training and received additional training in civil rights, criminal investigations, mental health. De-escalation skills and field training officer.
Chief, could I interrupt and ask you a question? Yes, just because it's been in the news so much about law enforcement being equipped to deal with people who have mental health issues, how how are you navigating that?
We've had every every officer but two right now have had the CIT training, uh critical response training put on by NAMI main. And uh they get certified, it's a forty-hour course. And it deals with. How to approach mental health, mental disability, how to de-escalate people who are in crisis and uh. So far, i- it is, in my estimation, in in Monmouth and in Winthrop, right, when I was working the road. Is that it really educates the officers on. The best practices of dealing with mental health as well as uh de-escalating any situation where there might be a mental health issue involved.
And and so is the goal that not to pick those folks to jail?
Yes. I've had several of these, I mean, um personal experiences with PD, uh dealing with people with mental health situations or well, disabilities. And. Spot on every time, they've ended in those situations which can escalate it to who knows where, and it was no escalation, there was a. Welling out and a calming down, so I got nothing but good to say to the PD as a. And it it's all about time, I mean, you give them the time they need to de-escalate. It's not like tasks where we move from one call to the other, in case we're closing as quick as possible, so we can move to the next call. Uh we take our time dealing with those situations, and if we have to call someone in, they can't back up calls, that's what we do. Dispatch and police policies have been updated, however, we are. In the process of going through uh main law enforcement accreditation program, which forces us to review. All our policies and those couple of recommendations from professionals who scrutinize our policies. And so every policy we have that's been updated is being looked at again and revamped. Uh to meet the NAMI accreditation. Uh one of the positives, if we get accredited, is it drops our insurance rate on the law enforcement division by fifteen percent. And that's the goal behind it, to standardize policies based on uh national guidelines. To make us the most professional agency that we can be. Uh we now have two firearms training officers, and this is one of those situations that town manager spoke of where. We we work in um consolidation with Monmouth, when we do our qualifications, we're qualified together. Monmouth has a certified uh ranger officer, and he kinda took the lead when Winthrop. Didn't have any uh firearms instructors and he uh helped helped us along with that. So we now train uh with firearms qualifications, both towns together, we have done uh. Other trainings, water rescue training, both departments working together. And we've had a couple meetings so far where we've included both both towns uh law enforcement. Sit down at the table and discuss discuss issues and uh resolving those issues moving forward. Budget changes. Police budget has and it has had an increase this year of one point oh four percent. We're able to ship funds from the officers line to overtime and backup call lines. We're now sharing the cost of the chief's position more, saving about forty thousand. Uh building maintenance is up due to the our HVAC contract renewal, uh and general costs increases across the board.
And and in that regard, don't forget when you're done here, you're all invited over to the police station, come and take a tour and uh. I guarantee you there'll be some high open uh casuals down there.
Can we go fishing in the basement?
Yes, bring up all.
Actually, we've had a lot catching salamanders.
Be careful for that one-eyed monster down there.
Right now, I'm waiting for a quote to come back uh for repointing, because we do have uh. Issues with mortar, some of that mortar was was put in in eighteen fifty-five when the building was built, and it's never been touched since. So we have loose bricks, we have cracks going through the basement all the way up to these. Uh and I'll point those out when we go down there, I'll show you what. We're looking at the one.
You notice, it's funny, there was a citizen uh in my office today, and he made a comment about how the uh. The town spent all this money on a new police station. And uh eighteen fifty-five, did you say?
Yeah. Um two lines were consolidated this year under one line, we had a three hundred dollar increase over over last year. Um one of the reasons why it's only three hundred, because now my cruiser is being gassed up in Monmouth, so Monmouth's line went up. Uh cruiser repair lines are up three thousand due to warranties expiring, uh cost of materials and parts is is just the way it is right now. Uh community programs up a hundred dollars. And that's for Halloween candy. We we overspent our budget last year because we gave out so much candy, so we put a little extra this year.
I I excuse the chief of giving away Snicker bars.
Anything to keep hungry town manager. Computer software increase, uh is doing video, cloud storage, body cameras, cruiser cameras, lasers, station videos. Uh you you wouldn't you wouldn't believe the amount of of. Video that we have to download and upload and send off to the courts and send off a lawyer and send off. The defense attorneys, I mean, it's just. The amount of video we have now, cruiser cameras, ten body cameras, uh and having to pay for that amount of storage is just tremendous. Uh and I see that line going up again next year, and then we'll get the cruiser cameras in.
But wouldn't you say that's it's well worth it in terms of safety for your officers and safety for the public?
Absolutely. I have yet to see a video that has a police department in that. Uh computer software maintenance, protectors, IT services, that's up a bit. One of the things we're working towards, you folks have been putting money away on at between ninety thousand dollars a year for. Townlight, uh radio technology, infrastructure upgrades, which includes uh the schools, public works, utilities. Police department, fire, and the indoor services and. One of the the uh issues is our tower site on Metcalf. Our tower site is the same tower site that was here when I started in nineteen eighty-four. The only difference is the trees around it has grown have grown up over it, so we are shooting waves through a canopy. We need to get above that canopy, we own a very small piece of property there, it's not like you're going to cut the trees down because we don't. They do interfere with our radio transmissions. To the point where we have, just recently, it was two days ago, had to send another department off to check down on our son because he wasn't answering. His radio, uh and he left his cell phone in the cruiser, so uh that is just a reality of it. We we need to, we're up at about seventy feet right now, and we'll need to get up hundred and sixty feet near. To get above the canopy.
Didn't we budget for that?
You've been putting ninety thousand dollars away um the past couple of years, I think we had a. Total of about three hundred and fifty thousand saved up. Uh but this whole project is to be right upfront with you, uh it's gonna cost about one point two million dollars. And that's a big price tag, but what I can't put a price on people's safety either. We're not just talking about Winthrop either, we're talking about our surrounding communities. And one of the one of the things we need to explore is uh working out a uh. Working into an environment with these other communities that we share some of those costs with them as well.
So the chief has already scheduled a a meeting with representatives, first responders, town administrators and so forth, with the towns that are certified by our dispatch center. So we can start breaking the news to them, hey, you need to start planning for this, because while we will bear a large portion of that cost, we won't bear it alone. And we're going to expect our partners, the dispatch center, to also vote for funding for this.
So again, that's a, the 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 issue is, is that, and I brought it up to the town manager, is. At ninety thousand dollars a year, um by the time we get one point two million dollars set aside, and looking twelve years down the road. And that one point two million is gonna be now two point two million because of cost increases and everything else. What I think would be a wise move i- is to bond that money out and just keep making the ninety hundred thousand dollars a year payment that we're doing now. We get the, we get the work done now, and we're not dealing with thirteen years from now trying to make uh. New technology, work with old technology that is new technology right now. And if everybody followed that, well blessed.
And and I I I share that opinion too, I think this is a cost that we probably are gonna have to finance so that we can get it done. Uh but looking ahead and moving forward, I think the police department is one of the departments where we need to create some sort of reserve account so that you can start saving up. Capital purchases, whether it's patrol units or radio equipment or or something else.
Yeah, what this what this upgrade does is it upgrades. Radio infrastructure and all our town equipment, because it means we'll be going to a P twenty-five digital system. Which means we have to have radios on the other end that. Can transpo for new signals coming out digitally. Uh so we need new new portables, new mobile units, and base units. One of the other things that we're we're looking to accomplish is is establishing a backup dispatch center and fire department. And. I had a rude awakening the other the other night when we had the fire department called to the town, uh police department down there. Or initially reported as electrical. Over. Uh turned out that it wasn't, but it got me thinking, what do we do if our building and our dispatch is compromised, we have no backup plan? Uh there was a plan put in place years ago, but it was never followed through to put the secondary dispatch. In up to the fire station so that in case we are compromised down here, it's just a matter of picking up a phone, because our phone are all internet-based phones now. Radios are just bring them up and plug it in and we're ready to go. So that's something that we're gonna be considering with this as well, that be one of the first projects, because it scares me that if that goes down, we got. Eighteen thousand people that dispatch center serves that we no longer serving because we didn't have a backup plan at home. So, yeah, no, uh I'll. Let's let yourself as impatient back there still, right?
Have we checked on uh whether any of the infrastructure money from the federal government will cover some of this course?
The the monies that are available through grants right now are leaning in other directions, it's starting to come back around where you're seeing uh. Radio equipment uh being part of the overall grant, but not ignorant in particular.
And so the town did actually apply for some part of funding through the county. Um our application wasn't graded as highly as others. There's uh about a million dollars that is anticipated to be freed up, and I've already talked with the county administrator about that, he was not encouraging. But nonetheless, uh unless he asked, the answer is always no, so we will ask again.
Okay. All right. Yeah, yeah. You're attended. Let's let Paul keep calling.
I just wanna know, do you look into the SafeCom guidance on emergency communications grants? They they did it as recently as twenty twenty-two. That's for the federal government, I do that one.
Uh I've not heard of that before.
We we didn't hear it all. Sorry, I I just asked, he looked into the SafeCom guidance on emergency communication grants, because it was done as recently as twenty twenty-two. To give information on where to get grants for emergency communications.
I see Anthony writing that down, I'm sure he will be looking into.
It's uh CISA dot com.
I'll 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 check with you.
Be very efficient that way. Let's let Paul keep continuing.
No, that's just curious.
All right, so let's see, uh one of the other goals is replenish the cruiser reserve accounts uh going forward. Uh next year, we're gonna need to replace the two thousand sixteen uh Ford SUV. And we presently, we we do at least purchase three, at least purchase on them. Uh although that's a good stock, yeah, it'd be nice to be able to purchase them already without having to borrow money for. Uh upcoming with purchase training uh for officer protection, we get the uh, we're gonna be ordering three of the ballistic shields. Uh from supervising vehicles initially, they had forty thousand dollars set aside in the the budget this year to purchase ten of them. And that's how expensive they are, uh four thousand dollars at least, uh and we decided to cut that back. And we're just going to go three, so it will be one in each of the supervising vehicles. One of the other issues that we're having is is the system that we have in our police compartment. Um runs one side of the building and the other, it's not big enough to handle the square footage in that building to do uh heating and cooling. The whole building at once. So in the winter, you've got a cold side of the house and a warm side of the house. In the summer, you have a cool side of the house and a warm side of the house. Depends on which pump kicks in upstairs and which side of the house gets warmed up or cooled down. Uh, so one of the, the areas we're looking at i- is in the dispatch area is having um, some cooling pumps installed in there. Cooling and heating pumps installed in there, um, because they're the ones in, that are required to be there twenty four seven. They're sitting there day and night no matter how cold and hot it is. And I've walked in before and they, they have brought personal heaters into dispatch in the wintertime uh, so they can keep warm while they're setting dispatch and that, that's just not right. Uh, so we need to address that problem and uh, one of the things I'm looking at going, but we have a cooling pump in there right now. And if we upgrade to a heating cooling system in the dispatch area, I would want to move that cooling pump out to the uh, garage so that in the summertime when we pick up stray dogs and they're in the garage, they're not overheating, that it keeps them cool. And I'm just an animal lover, so that, that's a good solution to that problem. We hate to have, we have a cattle out back. It's non shaded. Um, we can put a dog in there. They're in the huts on all day long. It's just not right for me to be in there. So this is a, this is a way of reutilizing what we already have and helping out the animals that have to hold till someone arrives to pick them up or we can get them into the shelter again. Add to already allocated funds for PD painting and general repairs. The station needs interior painting, exterior periphery point, front concrete repair and that's the stairs going in, roofing software repairs replaced. Uh, and then one of the other goals is to move hot water from the furnace and use more eco-friendly solutions. Some of those statistics I put in front of you tonight are up here. Um, one of the police responded to four thousand six hundred and maybe eight calls in service in twenty one, five thousand four hundred and seventy nine and twenty two. And as of the first six month this year, we handled thirty three hundred and twenty seven calls for service. And you do the math and that figures out to sixty six hundred and fifty four complaints, which is up uh, both hall hundred complaints over two years ago. Uh, these increases also impact dispatches. The increase is also reflected across other communities for dispatch voice. So it's not just one that's experiencing these increases. It's all the other communities that we dispatch for. And it's fire, emergency, uh, as well as police uh, one third month.
So chief, do you have any areas along that trend is trending upwards with the number of calls each year?
I just think it's the nature of the base. Uh, as people feel more comfortable calling, they're gonna call. Uh, we're having more traffic accidents, having, you know, more calls from, from other agencies to assist them, B H F.
So it sounds like just sort of across the board. That you're receiving a lot of calls for all different sorts of.
Right. And one of the, one of the handouts I gave you uh, on page three, four, and five will show you what type of calls, the nature of calls. The, the important thing i- is the last uh, four pages. These show the two-year event, twenty one, twenty two, and half of twenty three. And it shows you the percentages between each one of these on increases in, in lines uh, and the type of calls that we're handling. And this is not just, this is not just law enforcement. This includes um, fire EMS for the community of Woodville. I didn't go outside of this. This is just one of the numbers. If you look on the last page, you see the graph. Twenty one, we handle, this is all from January to date. Two thousand nine hundred and ninety seven and twenty two was three thousand three hundred and fifteen and that's a today's date were up to four thousand fifty. And like I said, it's not just law enforcement. It's across the board. Fire department's handling more calls, EMS is handling more calls.
I'm just wondering if the twenty twenty three numbers compared to the twenty nineteen numbers in terms of because two years ago, yeah, two years ago, we were in COVID. So a lot of people were so home, working from home, not traveling. Our tourism industry was in the down. So I mean, that I think had a lot to do with it.
I, I can tell you without giving you exact figures that it's been a steady increase.
Does anybody in the audience want to take a look?
With the communications center provides twenty four seven coverage to the residents of Woodville, providing dispatch services to Woodville police, Woodville fire, Woodville EMS, Woodville public works. We also answer emergency calls for the ones of water district. Their lines go off or if we have a broken vein. Uh, we provide dispatch services from police, fire, EMS, and down in Monmouth. We also provide fire, EMS dispatchs to the communities of Wayne, Reedfield, Baya, Mount Vernon, Manchester, and Bianna. Bianna is a little, a little different. We don't get a whole lot of calls up there for fire or rescue. But what we do, we have to go through a, another communication center because it's North Star Angels that is dispatched to Bianna, right in that community only. So it's a, it's a two-step process to get manuals to, to Bianna. Uh, all nine one one calls in our service here are presently being answered by the Interstark County Dispatch Center. And then forward to type dispatch center. If you remember last year, uh, we were dispatched, nine one one calls were dispatched out of Somerset SO. And because they couldn't handle the number of calls and their workforce was down, they couldn't hire people. Uh, they told all Kennebec County communities that as of July first, we're no longer going to be able to provide nine one one service to your county. So that sent everybody in a scramble to get out there and, and look. And we're fortunate that we were able to work a deal with Interstark where they took all of our dispatch communities on. Uh, took their nine one one calls on, which is, is a god blessing for us because we're not getting nine one one calls from dispatch centers all over the place. So uh, it came at a, it came at a price. We had to, we had to increase our, our cost in that line. Uh, but when they're the only game in town, you don't have much of a choice. Uh, you gotta go with that. Uh, dispatch provides twenty four seven access to our citizens who may walk into PD to file a complaint, speak with an officer. And finally, join our team. We're hiring right now. We have one position, one road position open tomorrow where we are uh, doing interviews to, for the sergeant's position. And once we promote that sergeant, then we will have opening in our control force. So you know anybody who certified, send them my way.
Do you recruit at the police academy? Do you recruit at the police academy?
Right now, the police academy is just doing sponsored people. They are no longer doing because uh, we got such a bad clock, bad backlog uh, of departments sending people that they're not taking kids from colleges, uh, free entries anymore.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah. So we just have to step up our process and visit schools instead of.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any questions on the presentation? I, I think we have a very great job.
I, yeah.
Sure. Would you speak up to her and get out, get the mic.
There used to be a, uh, I can't remember what you called it, internship with the high school kids. Do we have any of that left?
We, we do not. I just wanted to know if you're gonna have any plans to reinstitute the vice president of the police. Long as it's not me. Right now, feasibility, feasibility wise, we can't do it. We just don't have the resources to, to put someone on a bike downtown because they're running all over the place answering calls um, to dedicate someone to just doing that. I, I, I just can't do it at this point. And, and the answer to your question, the Explorer program, um, in the years past, we had an officer who was school resource officer, um, that ran that program. Uh, we lost that school resource position. So that, that went down with it because we just don't have the resources to dedicate that.
There is a program, sorry, there is a program in CATSI, and I think the L R T C has one as well.
That's correct.
Maybe there would be potential fish there.
Yeah. And, and one of the good things about CATSI is that they, they develop the kids and put them into, into the programs like uh, Kennebec Book Tech and, and uh, Central Maine Book Tech. They, they've got a three-year program that, that is really awesome. And uh, that's a good resource for us because you got kids coming out with their, their associates on their way to their bachelor's. Uh, who want to get into law enforcement, they're dedicated by, yeah, like they've already started and gotten that, I think, of course.
What's that? Share with the group, I mean.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you all.
Looks like well said. Thank you very much, Paul.
Have you had any sort of uh, uh, questions or backlash or ill feelings from anybody as far as sharing the chief's position with the new towns? Or has it all been positive?
So far, so far, it's all been positive. I had no negatives either.
I've had all, I've had great things from everybody, anybody I've talked to.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the managers report. And even before Anthony gets going, I'd like to say I think we have a meeting tomorrow to discuss various issues that council needs to redraft and we're gonna get together, put that all together and ask the council to prioritize it. Pretty sure neither one of us had that radio tower on the list and we probably have to make sure we put it on there.
I thought that was chief's problem, which problem.
No.
Dredge.
Which I, I really, it's kind of needed a lot on Sunday. Just, you know, out my, my short term memory, so the mind needs one of me. Okay, manager's report.
So I've got several items here. And I'll most start off with the heavy stuff. Starting with, I sent you guys and ladies some information uh, earlier this afternoon. I printed out copies because we had a quote for heat and oil for the coming year. And uh, and so there was an interest in seeing sort of how that stacked up uh, against what other communities are, are paying. And uh, so what I did was I sent out an email, there are certain and you got forty of the responses. I think there's somewhere maybe close to twenty responses or so. And, and the price that we were offered was um, uh, right near the bottom. Now, when you look at the total cost of the, of the contract compared to at least uh, one vendor who said, oh yeah, I can provide nine thousand gallons at this price. It's about a two thousand dollar delta there. And so, and so it's really a matter of what does the council feel comfortable with as far as how we want to see?
Is this a one-time purchase or is this, I mean, we have a nine thousand gallon tank that we can store it in?
Oh, no. So, so this is, this is that it's delivered throughout the course of the, the fall and the winter and the early spring to, to several of our facilities.
Well, I think you laid out four alternatives and I, like, we said earlier, I sent you an email saying, no, excellent. Except I couldn't get it to print and I couldn't get, they don't, they don't look to you. So I don't have it in front of me. It would be nice though if you have.
Oh, oh, I'm, I'm working off memory here, but I've already done number one, which was to reach out to some other communities and find out, you know, what they're paying. And I got in touch with at least one vendor who, just to say, you know, what would you pay? The other alternative would be to go ahead and issue an RFP. Oh, do you have it there, Shannon?
I have the email you sent.
Please.
Uh, so you sent us an email saying, I see four options for moving forward. I can call around the other nearby municipalities to find out what they're paying, the other vendors, to see what they would charge for nine thousand gallons of number two heating oil that would help determine um, where we stacked up against. And so we have that email right here that you provided to us this afternoon. You said you can quickly draft up an RFP and solicit bids for consideration on August twenty first. And you said you can also start working on the purchasing policy that could guide when and how such purchases are conducted that we would surely want to put out a formal bid for any purchase um, moving forward. And you had planned to use the executive system to do the initial research, but we can book it in the timeline by a week. Uh, we need to do that and we can undertake any combination of the options above several things.
Yeah. And, and so with that number three option, what I meant by that is with a purchasing policy usually does make different levels of purchases depending upon the cost. And once you get to a, to a certain cost, you know, you're definitely going to go out with a formal competitive bidding process. The value of this contract is um, about thirty one thousand dollars. There's no scenario under which we would not seek bids in a competitive bidding process for that amount.
This is, uh, developing a, a bidding and purchasing unified bidding and purchasing process has been an issue since uh, the beginning of Barbara Alexander's days. So uh, the question, of course, do we have time to do that? It means we now have one, we have to buy oil.
No.
Okay, that's what I figured the answer.
But so, so really and truly, it's a matter of, do you feel comfortable with the, the price that we've been quoted?
No.
And you could consider that at the next meeting? And then the uh, or the other option is you say, Anthony, get an RFP out there and let's, let's get some bids and see where we land.
As you said, you could do that now because twenty first, right?
And so, I mean, this is not a complicated thing to bid. I mean, the, frankly, the, the thing I would probably do is reach out to some of my peers in the town manager community and say, hey, we send you the RFP that you'd use for, for, for heating oil. And then I would adjust that and need RFPs, send it out. And so vendors are not going to need a long time in order to get back to us with a, with a price. And so I think that we, I could probably have something for you to consider on August the twenty first.
Can we move forward with an RFP to many of these communities?
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea. Also, I think we want to be sure and include our original visitor.
Of course, absolutely. Of course. I mean, so, so just so you both understand how this happens whenever you do an RFP. You might send it to, to vendors that you are familiar with and aware of, but at the same time, you also put that on the uh, there's a webpage on the Maine Municipal Association website strictly for any sort of bidding of goods and services. And vendors check that thing really religiously. So, so I, I would anticipate we would have multiple bids.
Wrong question I had uh, is the, as far as like the service end of stuff, do the towns, boilers, or the would, what does that play a part in the bidding, like well pricing as far as?
That's a good question, boy. I don't know. I don't know that I'm prepared to answer that. I'd look, I'd like to look at some of those RFPs to see if the service, if, if the price that you give includes annual servicing.
Does it include service or, or what is the relationship there? Is it more if you don't go with their service? Uh, can we find service elsewhere? Where is a service? Is it certainly, is the service currently coming from uh, the, in the facilities that we're gonna need the oil? Uh, is a service currently coming from the supplier or is it coming from other, other suppliers?
Yeah.
Whether it's mechanical services or.
We use one company for supply, one company for controls.
Right.
So, you know, that's all gonna be worked out.
Well, we don't currently use um, you know, like the name of the company, it's out of Wusson, right?
Yeah, nothing.
So Jim has his hand up right now to wanting to speak. Jim, can you unmute yourself?
Yeah, uh, I have a quick question in regards to the number of gallons that were proposed. It was nine thousand gallons, I think, right, that I saw in the email?
That's correct.
And I know that we did install a new furnace at the library. And that he said that was probably going to be a decrease in oil consumption there. And And would we consider that and also with the changing over the furnaces in the school systems, would we not need as many? Number of gallons to be pre-purchased ahead of time?
So the school.
What was what was purchased last year?
I'd have to go back and look at that, but the school had a different contract than the town did, so the school facilities. Were were dealing with the vendor themselves as opposed to part of our contract.
That clears that, thank you.
Yeah, and so and so one thing for for you folks to consider moving forward, I mean, we don't have time to do this this year, but. A number of my peers that I contacted said that they are transitioning to propane, which the schools are doing. And your heating pumps and so maybe that we want to look at in the future.
Well, I I just wondered how how many gallons do we did we purchase last year and do we need to purchase that amount of gallons and what did we use last year? I'd like to get those numbers on the table so I can understand what do we need to pre-buy at a certain price? Then I also add tackle on to what Roy was saying is what who do we use for services? And how does that look in fact into a contract?
I think you gotta ask for service rates as well as delivery rates, you know.
That may be part of the RFP.
Yeah, yeah. The other, the other thing is. If we do that, then we lose our kind of. Diesel better. Then we're gonna have to install. This is a long term.
What, how does that relate to the diesel and and gasoline and all that? Is there, are there, is that something that we should be thinking we're putting an RFP out for as well, just that, so we have the information? Going forward.
So we would want to, if we want to start. Buying diesel and bulk and yes, we would want to put out an RFP, so. The public works director is pricing diesel tanks for storage. And once we get a price, the superintendent and I are going to talk about the possibility of us that being a joint venture.
Because they only have two buses left, right?
So so. So. Yeah, there may be some, there may be some economies of scale can do in. Are purchasing a a diesel tank and then just having our own fuel depot.
I think it's worth getting gathering all the numbers and figuring it out, I mean, I think it's maybe nice to know what.
So, you know, there's money to be saved by having a boat in it.
Also, also out of the vendors they cut quotes from, at least one of them also sells diesel. So maybe if they were aware. Yeah, so maybe if they were aware that we were interested in purchasing diesel and fuel. Or they would be able to give us a much better rate than diesel.
Well, the the first thing is we gotta have a tank that we can store, that's very important.
Right.
So, so, okay, so I think I have my marketing orders. So number two, just an update about the Norcross Point redevelopment, there's been some interesting movement on that prime. So the council chair and I met with the American Legion, what about two weeks ago in the. And. It was a hard no from them if we were asking for exclusive rights of a parking lot that we would develop there using some state grant. And the state said it's a hard no for them providing that money unless that parking lot was used exclusively for boat trailer track. During the season, so we've got one more Hail Mary to throw, but it is it is a Hail Mary. And so, so the administrator of that grant program came and visited me last week. Cause I was asking, so what are our options for improving Norcross Point for the grant program to administer? And one of the things that she mentioned was that that same grant can pay for a boat ramp replacement. And that boat ramps typically have a lifespan of about twenty years and our boat ramp is now twenty two years old. She came and looked at it in turn, it doesn't have to be replaced, so fortunately. We still had a design from the two thousand and one boat ramp replacement, and so she sent those plans to me, I forwarded them to the engineer that. We had a chat today, so Jim, I see your hands up, are you wanting to speak to the oil item or to this item?
No, this item, please, I'll let you finish, but when you're done, I just said comment.
So. So anyway, so if you encourage me to. Use those that design as the basis for an updated for a boat ramp replacement. Those grant applications are released April first. And then the the grants are typically in the in the fall. And so spoke with the engineer today, so that's likely what we're going to do, she also suggested maybe a two phase project. Because that parking lot there at the Maranaq Grant needs to be improved, it's a mess. And so there might be an opportunity to reconfigure the parking lot to add a couple more spaces and maybe navigate a boat trailer. In and out of that parking lot a little easier, so that's she said that would be a a potential application the following year. So so at least we've got a kernel of a plan going there, she also said that the the boarding float. That runs alongside that ramp needs to be replaced and as luck would have it, the. Grant application deadline was two days later, so I went ahead and filled out that grant application in Senatorate, so I feel confident that.
Good timing.
Yeah, I feel confident that we'll end up getting the grant to to pay for that, a new board float there. And Andy had a good idea about extending that by using some of the some of the portions of the the current. Or float to extend it a little bit.
Some some of the older pieces, they're still in good shape and one of the problems with boarding squads is they're not long enough. There's not enough room to park a boat, go get a trailer and dock another boat, so if we can use two or three of the existing ones. To extend that boarding float, that will get the whole thing a little more convenient.
I thought you just determined that the existing ones are in.
That's what the state said, that are replaced at a certain time period, they don't bother really to determine the condition. So it's like, okay, it's twenty years gone by, you replace it.
Yeah, I think she said the lifespan of it's about twelve years.
Yeah, and we're we're not longer than that, I think.
So, so I mean, she's already been unexpected and said, yeah, you should apply for these things, which if you could even if you actually do it for her.
Is it a matching grant or is it just a grant?
No, it's just a grant.
Okay.
It's just a grant. So lastly, I'll have had a conversation recently. Oh, you're you you're right, you're right, it is seven thousand, but it's not much. So last I had a conversation with Doug Beck. About the six hundred thousand dollar project that was proposed on Norcross Point, where those funds were. Awarded to us three years ago, he said the cost of that project now is like the six hundred thousand dollars, one point two million, that's probably about double the last three years. And he said, you essentially have two options. Option number one is you could take the plan that you currently have, update the the cost and and resubmit that application. But if it is a one point two million dollar project, the maximum grade you can get is five hundred thousand dollars, so we'd be looking at. A seven hundred thousand dollar match on our part in order to pull up that plan. The second option that he mentioned was going back to the public, doing a really robust job. Of seeking public input on what it is that the community would most value. Doing and having down there at Norcross Point and then building a plan around that. That would take into consideration what our comfort level is depending upon expenses. That's the option that he recommended, he is the first verbal, they're getting grand monies. And and I happen to agree with him as well, I think I think we need to go through a process, but. Really inviting the public to come and engage with us to getting there, so we, so whatever we do, you know it has community support and we know it reflects. Exactly what it is that the community would like to happen in that area.
Could I make the company?
Of course, yeah.
We we went through all this last time, okay, I think the problem at this point is it was two, two and a half years ago. And if we don't go through it again, people's memories are short and they're all going to be how, you know, who authorized you to spend a month, why would you do this? Why do you do that? The best thing is probably to do just after what Doug Beck recommended and Anthony agreed with it, I agree with it at this point. It's just starting to become scratch, okay, you know, the the entire project was. Originally, well, originally it was designed in stages because we didn't think we would get the whole grant. And Jeff, the former town manager, decided to try the whole grant, which was one point two. And was we didn't get it and we went back to the stages, problem stages, of course, is that you have moving and move out costs. You know, startup costs and they always end up being fifteen, twenty percent of the order. So we're trying to get a couple enough money for a couple stages and once was the goal, it didn't work out and this is where we are. We always, we're initially planning to do the project in stages.
The the important part is as I see it is it is getting the community involved. I've been I've been a resident of this town for my entire life, I pay attention, I'm out of the community and I knew nothing about that. Last project until it was already in the works and it it's one of those deals where if you're going to get the community's involvement. Battling, you need to let them know what you're doing.
This is precisely why Doug, Anthony and myself, although initially I was like shocked, what do you mean, you're gonna be sold, really? This is why the three of us agreed, okay, that, you know, we we should just start over. And, you know, plaster it out there. Twice as much as it was plastered last time.
But I think it's the only way that's gonna be successful.
Well, you know, that's what we want to do, so.
Can I ask this question?
Sure, Anthony.
Would it be possible to put a questionnaire in this November's election? To have three or four choices and let the public decide by vote, which one makes the most sense? You're encouraging public involvement and transparency, you have three or four ideas that can be put in. Into the ballot and they can fill out the questionnaire from an informational standpoint and you tally up which one got the most votes? I don't know.
You could definitely do that, the only concern first that I might have about that is you have like three or four things that.
No.
Most interesting. I mean, what if there's a fifth thing that we hadn't thought about and and then, you know, people say, why didn't you include that?
And then it's tough to have the financial aspect of that too, I mean, everybody would love to have a Taj Mahal down there.
Well, and I and I and I think though initially, what you're just looking, it's like a brainstorming exercise, right? You're just looking for ideas, what what is it that 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 would move you to be excited about whatever's going on down there? And and then we'd see and then we'd see if if we can pull off, you know, so so let's say, Roy, that they that. We end up with a list of like ten things, we realize we can't do all ten of these things, but we can do three of them, you know, and then you.
Right.
You're eating an elephant again, right?
And you were talking on and is kind of spot on, when we started talking about having to replace. That boardwalk down there by Swin Beach, which that clearly needs to be replaced, certain people were encouraging. You know, our engineer gave us several different scenarios, several different costs. And got a lot of pressure to replace it with brand and we we would have spent so much money on the rest of the project, so. Your comment about the Taj Mahal is still a little bit blunting and then the basic issue down there, the port lock shot. The old steamer dock has to come out, it's, we're gonna get to where it's just, you know, the the deck has subsided below the level of the. So and then around the entire point, the roof rack is subsiding. I I had an idea, it was never done right, I think it was just out the outside and we were talking about using what they call slapper bracket. Which is more expensive, but from a civilian use standpoint, it's a lot nicer than walking on busted brand. You know, you can walk on the slabs and you can fish and so replace it down on the point which started to be voted like. The ice is disturbing the riprap, so it's kind of like start at the beach, work your way around and then the boat ramp. Brand will also cover some riprap in the area of the boat ramp, so they all have to meld together.
So we don't forget Jim still has the aneurysm.
Thank you, thank you for finally recognizing me, everyone was jumping in before. Like to get back and talk towards the Norcross and the parking. I really think you need to have somebody come in and evaluate that parking. And what we have down there and what can they do, I have a few ideas myself, but. I I under, I'm just tired of maybe not having enough parking down there. For boat and trailer and just other people that spectators going down there for the concert for Liz and or. Just participants that want to be down there fishing or what have you, but I I'm wondering if they can reevaluate that parking. You know, maybe move the gazebo towards the water's edge a little bit, maybe giving just regular parking just to that side. Straight in parking and then leave the rest of it to be boat and trailer parking, there's a few things that could be done down there, I think. If you had somebody coming and doing a valuation because. Clearly, there's not enough parking, I mean, I noticed that, you know. During the concert there this last Saturday, there just wasn't enough parking for people to get in there and and do what they needed to do.
And and Jim, when I talked with the engineer today, we talked about some of these things and one of the things that we talked about is. You know, do we need to create a path from the municipal parking lot? Down to Norcross Point, because my wife and I attended the first concert and I didn't know what the. Parking situation was going to be like, so I just whipped into the municipal lot.
Sure.
And 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 we were happy walking, you know, making a three to five minute walk down to the down to the point.
Agreed.
We were the only ones in that lot and so, you know, I I just don't know that people think about, hey, why don't we park here and we can walk down?
And there's a couple of issues, one is to work with Water District and make a path from municipal lot. Which is a railway station through the Water District property and then out onto the street in front of whoever, which would shorten. You know, and make it obvious, put signage on it, which would shorten the walk and certainly, the other thing is, and I didn't mention to the town manager, but. We need better signage to indicate that the municipal lot is just exactly that, the municipal lot. All the years I know the business, I just went to it, but I would send people downtown and they tell me there's no place to park. And I said, right there, you know, in front of the subway, and they'd say, oh, well, we thought that was the restaurant's parking lot. So we we need to do a better job signing that up, get get a path through the Water District towards the beach. And then long raised plan is a path from downtown Long Island Stream to the beach. That's something that was brought up during the original Norcross redevelopment and it's not something that the. I do not think it's something that Doug Beck's folks will pay for, but it's an idea that they found attractive. That we would think of doing something like that, so. There's still much to go on down there.
Yeah, my only my only concern is when we originally first looked at this grant, okay, there was, we 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 had full teeth to get. Thirty thousand dollars to pay for the process of getting the grant in, that was hard enough. And then we said it was only going to cost a certain amount of money and then over time it grew to one point three million dollars. And the problem that I'm getting from constituents is not a problem, it's their opinion. Is that, as we have mentioned, there are other priorities that we need to put first, that path is not a priority. People can use the sidewalks, okay, second of all, that the 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 dock, the old. The old steamship dock, people have been asking for years and years, like, when is that going to come out? We I I think at one time we had an army corps of engineer approval to have that removed, but we didn't put forth the funding for it. So if we can get a grant for that removal and for the other thing is before we go talking about re- redeveloping Norcross Point. Number one, Jim, it's not just for my concerts, other people use that space. And there are weddings that go on down there, I only book it for Sundays, but there are, it's booked often on Saturdays for things. The 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 town lunch program is held down there. And there's underground wiring and the whole thing, that space is oftentimes filled depending on what's going on down there, so you do need that open space. But the. The problem I have is that we're gonna put all this money into, you know, riprap and all this, but the this the Norcross Point itself is not getting maintained. As it should have been maintained, the the. The 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 gazebo has been a trash heap for like three years now because all the 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 railings got kicked out by vandals. We've got vandalized tables down there that are still sitting up and that are endangered children and full of splinters, they're full of cuts. And I and I realize that people do that sort of thing every single year, but we can't leave them down there for people to injure themselves on. Um and we are not maintaining the grounds. The hedges aren't getting trimmed. I haven't done it myself again this year. Uh as far as my extension cord could reach. Um there's invasives down there that have taken over all of the landscaping. The sidewalks have not been trimmed back so that that people with strollers, people with wheelchairs can actually access the entire point. And and you're right, the parking lot is a real major issue because when I watch boats come through and you know, with trucks, they bounce around so bad, they're almost hitting the cars that are in the parking lot. Because it's just so rough in that parking lot. So those are what I see as priorities. If we can't get grant for the priorities, I don't agree with the whole one point three eleven thing.
If if we can uh just make a comment.
You can make a comment. That's what made mine worse.
No, that's you're good. You're already done? The um the protection of gazebo, when we go through the old grant materials, it'll be obvious, uh was uh discussed. Um we're covering up with iron bars and in those state sword those and uh in the in the rails. Um the parking issue has been discussed. We should put a guardrail between the parking lot. And the uh and the lawn area has been discussed. Um another thing that we need to put on our uh look ahead list is we need to have an ordinance to regulate the uh location uh of various statue monuments and memorials. Okay, I mean, I've always simply in the world for people that wanna have a memorial. But we're quickly getting to the point where the borrowed landscape is being limited by memorials. You know, I mean, there's two flag holes on Norcross Point. Okay, during initial process, I got permission from the people that built a big flag hole to reduce several around it. Okay, so.
So you're saying we should take down the evidence for royals?
No, I'm not saying any of that. I'm saying we are, we have what we have, okay? But as we grow, as more requests come in, we need a guideline to deal with. As all I'm saying, I I do not wanna take down anyone's memory. That's not, not what I'm saying. So I'm telling you that all the things that you've talked about have been considered and will be considered again.
Sounds like we all have some really good perspectives on what uh should be done around the town. I would like to just it just makes me think about the um comprehensive planning committee and I know that they have worked with the residents to get feedback and I was wondering if there was any possibility that we could get maybe an updated representation from them at some point to kind of share.
But they have only completed one chapter on their, they just recently completed a chapter on their uh comprehensive plan. And they have others that are in the works. Norcross Point is one of them. They have not completed that. And they will, there's
is there any way of just presenting kind of what some of the feedback is that they received thus far from the community, just to kind of have an idea?
I could certainly ask them. That'd be great. Yeah.
I have one quick comment.
Yes, sir.
Uh somebody in their mic called.
That's me.
Uh I'm done. I know it's been brought up in the past, but one thing that, you know, as far as Norcross Point, you know, we talked about the the vandalism and all that stuff down there. Is there any chance of looking against cameras down there?
I've asked about that for years.
That's another thing.
I think that's one of those things. What's that?
That's another thing that was budgeted into the uh into the last.
Cameras. Uh the cameras down there really shouldn't have to be a budgeted item, I wouldn't imagine. It it's 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 pretty small cost in the whole school buildings. And and maybe we can find somewhere that we could do that to prevent the bigger costs of rebuilding everything over and over.
So so let me let me talk with the police chief about that. He'd be our resident. And then we'll and then we'll send a recommendation to you guys.
I I I do like Andy's recommendation to get some signs down to the municipal parking lot. That's a good idea, I thought. I I get some signs kicking around somewhere that were up along the lakeside that you might be able to repurpose for down there.
And and just so you know, I always, I don't find that amusing, but I always recommend to people that come to concerts that they can park in the library parking lot. I always make that recommendation. I always tell them also they can park on Main Street. They can park over by Sully's in that area. Um but it's just a matter of convenience. A lot of people don't wanna have to walk the extra one or two blocks.
All right. I think I got my marks, Bruce, uh on that on that topic. So third top, weather accessibility. So interestingly, Civic Plus contacted me about ensuring that our web is accessible by people a host of different sort of accessibility issues. Uh and at the same time, uh Jim King here uh had contacted us, raising the same sort of concerns. And so I got a presentation from Civic Plus and I do actually have some software that helps address identify whatever issues that you might have on your website. And then it has some artificial intelligence in order to address those. Now that does not mean that human beings are not also involved in this process, wanting to accommodate. Uh but it does sound like something that could be advantageous, especially to an aging community like like ours. So that that is not great. It comes with the cost. The cost is about forty two hundred dollars for the software uh in order to ensure that our site meets the accessibility standards um prescribed by law. And they ran a diagnostic of it. Uh we were, I think, seventy three percent um accessibility. But one of the things that we're gonna have is we've got like ten thousand pages on our website. Uh because we have um town council meetings dating back like fifteen years. And so no one leaves fifteen years worth of minutes on their website. So we're gonna have to do some culling of that in order to make those diagnostic uh programs a little bit more efficient. But the question is, how comfortable are you folks with spending that kind of money? And when I talk with Jim, he raised a really good question that I would never would have considered. But when he's accessing our website, he said one of the main issues is that the documents that we post, our PDFs, are not accessible. And so I asked Civic Plus, what do you have in order to ensure that when I post the the council's agenda, for instance, that that's uh a document that someone like Jim will be able to access? And they do have um a software that ensures that. They said it's a license and it's three hundred dollars per license. And my thought is that if we're gonna go this route, we should have two licenses. One for myself, then one for the executive assistant who's also gonna be doing a lot of work and posting on the website. So in total, you'd be talking about nearly five thousand dollars to ensure that our our website is accessible.
Now, is this does this include actually making the changes or is this a software to give us an assessment?
Oh, no, no. It makes the changes for us. So they do offer a lower cost program. But it just identifies the problems and then and then one of us would have, I think I would do that. And that would be a full time job in and of itself, especially when you've got ten thousand pages on the website.
Is this an ongoing thing?
Oh, yes.
Have that software every time we update it or something new. It will look at it and tell you what you need to do.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And and one of the good things about it, Roy, is it looks at it from a lot of different perspectives. So uh if you're someone who has eyesight problems, it has one solution for you. If you're dyslexic, it has another solution for you. If you have trouble differentiating between colors, it has another uh and so the user is able to adjust whatever.
They can go in and modify what they extend the best. And is this an ongoing software program that's gonna work for years to come or is it a yearly license?
The cost would be yearly. Yeah, I mean, like any license, the cost is gonna be is gonna be yearly. So you'd be looking at five thousand dollars a year in order to ensure uh accessibility.
But we still have, sorry, but we still have control over our content.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm just curious. Why would we have to have a license for two people in town? Doesn't the town get the license?
The license is for a user. So the people who are actually posting the documents on the website would run it through this software first. The software um works with the document to ensure its accessibility.
I I think that pension, I mean, the town is the user. I mean, no, the town.
Andy, it's not the it's not the town. It's the person who's putting the content on the website that needs the license.
I surrender.
In order to ensure that the document is is accessible. And I appreciate Jim for bringing that up, just like I said, if it never would have occurred for me to to have thought about.
It sounds it it sounds like a great program to help us meet the ADA requirements for all of our information online for everybody. So it sounds like an all inclusive program. In that case, I'm all in.
Can you give us the the name and everything of the programs? We can do a little research on that.
Sure.
I'm curious how it works and all that stuff.
Sure. Okay, we'll do. Okay, the rest of this stuff is is lighter fare. Oh, you know what? Jim, is there anything that you wanted to say about the accessibility?
Well, I think you've covered it pretty well. Problem with a website like uh I I'll just preface my remarks by saying I've been working in the field of accessibility for basically all my professional career. Uh website like the town of Winter Pass is called is in the background, it's called CMS Content Management System. And it's designed so that various people have authority to modify the website uh at various points on the website. There's very, there's really only one person or one administrator that has authority to administer anything anywhere in the website. Rest of it's all controlled by permissions, just like on a drug in the network. And you're exactly right. Some of the PDF documents that are put up are not, are not accessible. The issue is um not with the website, but with the original PDF document. I don't want to leave anybody with the impression that PDF in and of itself, which in the name, is an inaccessible format. That is not the case. PDF document can be accessible or not accessible. That all depends on how the document is constructed in the first place. I would never in my wildest dreams expect the average user of a coffee machine or uh any other kind of, you know, word processor or whatever to know how to know what the difference or know what is necessary to make a document accessible. You've never had any reason to work with it. You wouldn't have a clue. I wouldn't expect you to. That's another reasonable request. So an add on to the website like this is uh in most cases, a pretty good uh alternative to having somebody in place examining everything that goes on on to the website. That for uh an organization of our size is the um not really feasible. It would need a much larger organization where you have a staff of people or a single staff member assigned to do that and to do and to have the expertise to do it right. So I think in my mind, this is a a a good approach. Um and we can certainly give it a shot for a contract period or time or a trial period and see how well it works.
Thank you, Jim. So one one point of uh order there is right now, we could actually have two super users administrators to the website, that being myself and library director, Richard Ford. And then when our traffic system comes on, she will have the same access that we do. So we can have any number of super users on the site. It's just uh we wanna limit that obviously for controls. So 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 I will, yes, I'll get you that information about the the different softwares.
Right.
None of them will see here. So um I also looked into whether or not there's questions, whether or not there's a newer version of a meeting owl. There is. It's not significantly different than than what's sitting before you right now. Although it does allow for smoother transitions and picks up voices will better, you know, it's just a a a slicker version of the meeting owl. The one thing that it does do is it 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 we can network this meeting owl, the newer version of the meeting owl, and extend our reach by thirty feet. So what we would probably do is have two meeting owls right here in the middle of the room. One's that would be sort of where this is right now for the council, one closer to the audience as a better job of picking up the audience. So that is a possibility. That's a nine hundred dollar cost for that. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Well, so far, the the rules of the town council last week drafted him. We're still asking the audience to come to the podium. So I don't know if we need the extra. Uh that may change.
I'm not sure what we can do either, but but there was some interest expressed in maybe looking at a newer generation of the beating owl. That's what's out there right now. Then let's see. Oh, uh uh Spirit of America Award. So I've got one response about the Spirit of America Award. You guys know volunteers, otherwise I think I'm gonna put it out to the community so that we can, like, try to nominations from the community. And then lastly, before I interview for this job, I had the audacity to schedule some vacation time in the coming month. So I just wanted to make you folks aware of it. I will be out of the office on August third through the fourth. And then uh this is not vacation, but uh August ninth through the eleventh is the is the main Town and City Managers Association Conference, I'm sure, which uh I'll be attending. And that's always a great event for just learning and networking. I have a week of vacation scheduled for September seventh through the fifteenth. And then uh and then my uh my anniversary is October the sixteenth. That's the uh that's the third Monday of the month. I was hoping maybe we could either have that week's meeting on Tuesday or the or the following. There are five Mondays in October, maybe the maybe the following instead or Monday.
It's just not real, I don't know.
I think you probably want some staff.
Well, it it wouldn't be the first time, you know.
I don't I don't have a problem with Tuesday.
Okay. I'll I'll put it out there and email the guys' response. But I wanted it on, I wanted it on the calendar.
I had one here with no town manager, no vice chair. It was just not for us. Yeah, we got through it.
And that is the end of my report. Just a reminder, when we're done here, we'll go over and have the chief give us a quick tour of the police station.
I like the quick emphasis.
I haven't.
Is this like advisement for us to shut our phones off during these periods? Or leave them on?
We need to show your phone.
Oh. Yeah.
Not to necessarily.
Wants.
No, no, I mean, if somebody said, oh, let's get you out there.
They can leave messages on this phone, town manager. That means gonna answer.
So do we adjourn the meeting before we go down to the police station?
No, we're gonna just, oh, yes. So no, we won't. We wanna adjourn the meeting until after the two W. I mean, we're we're still technically in the meeting. So someone just remember that we need to motion and a second and a vote.
Are you just gonna walk down?
Yeah, no.
Are we just gonna walk down?
Yeah. I'm driving.
Fine.
What?